This conference will now be recorded.
All right. All right, well, I have six o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. If everyone please stand, remain standing. We'll start off with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the land, to the nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Caldwell, would you honor our solidification, please?
Amen.
If we just have a moment of silence for any of our neighbors who may have passed away. All right, thank you very much. Please be seated. Happy New Year, everybody. Glad to see you, everybody. Take this opportunity to take your phones out, cut them off, or at least cut them down. I'm sure we have some very nice ringtones out there. We can check them out later. And at this time, if anybody on the board has a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda night, please make it known at this time. Next up is the adoption of the agenda as it is.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, second.
Second.
Call it, favor.
Aye.
Next up is public comments. Do we have anything? I didn't see anything signed up. All right, introduction of the new police officer, Don Sutton.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Board. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you, our new police officer, Don Sutton. Officer Sutton comes to us from the Griffin Police Department. I had the pleasure of working with him over there and hiring him over there. He worked there for four and a half years. Don Hales from Parkersburg, West Virginia. Served the United States Marine Corps for four years before he went to the Griffin Police Department. Graduated basic law enforcement training at Craven Community College. He's currently enrolled in criminal justice and criminal psychology program at Liberty University. His post, basic law enforcement training courses include radar, standardized field sobriety, major case interviewing, crime scene reconstruction, major case statement analysis, background investigations, field training officer, and advanced report writing. So he's a well-rounded, well-trained officer, and we're very fortunate to have him. Don's going to be a good asset today.
Welcome to town, sir. Welcome aboard. All right, next up is the planning board report. How about you doing it tonight?
Good evening. Just two quick ones. The first one is the mailbox issue. That was voted and approved, the resolution. Those that did approve that on the planning board basically are on the side of safety, whereas those that did not were basically citing the prior report, the last meeting, that there was no findings that the mailboxes had been an issue. So that's the first one. The second one is just that Vice, sorry, Chairperson King resigned. And in that time, I, as the Vice Chair, took over. Now, there was a motion that was passed that I be the Chair. However, I did offer up the fact that I think the other incoming members should have the right to choose kind of their own destiny. So for now, I'm acting unless we arrive at another conclusion, Frank. So that's it.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you. All right, now, my favorite part of the night, a presentation from the Turkey Truck Proceeds from Deanna. Come on up, absolutely. I'll make sure she doesn't change her mind.
I'll let you put it into the mirror.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. Good job. So, wanted to thank the community for, twenty-six years ago, we had a dream that we wanted to open a fitness center, a place where people could exercise and come together. Okay. And come together. But we had, our first employee was a retired Marine. Little did I know that Jack Butler would be with me for twenty-five years and retire at the age of eighty-four. There wasn't one person that Jack met that he did not encourage to exercise, it didn't matter youth or senior, to exercise and keep moving and to never stop. So it's our hope and our wish that this would go towards an exercise area and equipment to be placed on the trail in Jack Butler's honor. That's all I got. But it's, um...
Thank you so much.
It's my home of origin, home.
Yes, it is.
And Jack is an amazing man, and he's one of the biggest men I've ever met, as far as his character. And he had a great saying I love for all those of us who are, let's say, over fifty. Manage the decay. And that's what we do. We manage the decay. But thank you so much. One of the best businesses we have in town. You do so much for the community. Can't say enough about you and your organization. And you tolerate me well.
This particular event also bid a thousand dollars that went to Swansboro High School swim team, Crowe Town High School swim team, and purchased jackets and shirts for the Crowe Town High School lacrosse, the men's cross-country team, excuse me, cross-country team, or state champions. And for two years, they've been there at six o'clock in the morning helping us manage the parking. So when you have over four hundred people that are in there, you've got to have some parking control. And those high school students did it perfectly. Hey, there might be some recruits for you now.
There you go. I'm always amazed if people show up for that on Thanksgiving morning, the amount of people that just, every year. Can't say enough about it. Thank you again. Next up is the consent agenda. A motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Second. Charlie, hold favor. Thank you. Next up is the presentation of the 2024 Police Annual Report. Come back up, Chief.
All right, so tonight, we're going to be going over the 2024 annual report, which will go back over 2023 crime stats and look over some significant events for 2023 and then what we expect for 2024. So some significant events or accomplishments that occurred in 2023. Number one was the relocation of the police department to the Town Hall Building. We are completely moved over now. We had an evidence audit conducted by North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation. All of the evidence collection procedures and storage practices were looked at, and we have updated those to include video surveillance now in the evidence room, outside of the evidence room and hallways. And we have new tracking protocols and security practices in place. The officers have also attended a training session conducted by the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation on evidence. The standard operating procedures manual was updated. We deployed body cameras. New Glock nine-millimeter duty handguns were ordered, and we're waiting for them to be delivered. New winter patrol uniforms were issued for all the officers, including jackets, hoodies, and new shirts. We transitioned radio service to Police Law Channel Five. So Law Channel Four, we were having service issues with. It was going to require an antenna to be replaced, and we went and talked to Emerald Isle, and Emerald Isle was onboard with us, onboarding into their communication system, which has been a benefit for both agencies because now we're communicating directly with Emerald Isle back and forth. So if we need assistance, they can assist us. If they need assistance, we're here to assist them. So that's worked out greatly. And then we implemented an active nine-one-one phone app. We talked to the fire department. The fire department gave us access to that app. It doesn't cost, it's very, very minimal to put on the duty phone an app that will page the officer for any medical or fire emergency when the fire department is dispatched to get the police officer en route as quick as we can. And that way, we're there for lift assist, or if we need to force entry to a residence to assist fire department, we'll be capable of doing that. Our crime stats look pretty good. So Part One offenses, obviously, as you can see, no homicides, rapes, or robberies, or aggravated assaults in Cape Codaret. We had one burglary, breaking and entering. There was no items taken in that. That was just one breaking and entering. It was forced entry, but no items were missing. Fifteen larcenies, primarily those larcenies occur from our department store, our box stores across the street. No motor vehicle thefts, and one arson, which was actually domestic violence related. All right. Six simple assaults for Part Two offenses, one forgery, thirteen frauds. And again, those frauds are mainly coming from our commercial box stores across the street. Zero embezzlements, zero stolen property. Vandalism, we had thirteen. Weapons violations, prostitution, zero. And then other sex offenses would be two. Those were both domestic-related as well. Drug violations, nine. Obviously, no gambling. And then offense against family or children, twenty-seven. But this is a number that will show when we respond to domestic violence situations or child abuse. So all of that will be lumped into one there. Driving while impaired, we had twenty-two arrests for driving while impaired. I would like to see that number increase. I do think that that's one of our major issues in this town is traffic and driving while impaired. Liquor law violations, we had two. Disorderly conducts, three. Suspicious person calls, eight. And then all other offenses, sixty-one. All other offenses can include annual complaints, trespassing, minor offenses like that. So total calls for service for 2023, three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight police calls, conducted one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven traffic stops, investigated fifty-two motor vehicle collisions, and had two hundred and twenty-one total arrests or citations issued. I think our crime stats are low because of this last number of directed patrols, which includes business checks, residential checks, neighborhood patrols, park checks, targeted traffic enforcement operations, and proactive policing. Sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty-nine directed patrols. Yes, sir.
Chief, can I ask you a question? In the past, our department has offered, when people go out of town, they call, that you will come and check their homes. Do we still offer that?
We do, and people come by frequently and let us know when they're going to be out of town. And if anybody wants to take advantage of that when you go out of town, we will fill out a form, and it will give us a contact number, and we will check on that property that's assigned to the patrol officer's work.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, mutual aid. We respond mutual aid with several different law enforcement agencies and in several towns. So the town appellate here, we responded nine times mutual aid. Those were requests either from the Sheriff's Department for priority calls or for North Carolina State Highway Patrol requesting us to assist with either a stranded motorist or a motor vehicle collision. And most of the time, that is just standing by for Highway Patrol until they can get a trooper on the scene. Same thing with the Sheriff's Department. We tend to, we will. When we respond for the Sheriff's Department, the recipient, the appellate here, is a mutual aid request from the sheriff, and it is to stand by, secure the scene, so they can get there and investigate the crime. Emerald Isle, we responded four times. But as I said, we are now on the same radio channels as Emerald Isle, so we're responding back and forth. They have responded to assist us on multiple occasions, including a couple of times where officers have called for assistance on traffic stops where we had one pursuit. And then sixteen other would be going out to Stella or other calls for the sheriff. EMS, with the implementation of the new active nine-one-one system, we responded to one hundred and twenty-seven EMS rescue calls in addition to seven fire calls. That's only inside the city limits of Cape Codaret.
One question on your other sixteen.
Stella, Boge, those areas. We, our MS system doesn't keep track.
Mazeville?
I've not, since I've been here, we've not gone to Mazeville. We do have a mutual aid agreement with Mazeville to respond to them if they request assistance. But they have not requested it so far. Goals and initiatives for the 2024 year. Recruitment and retention. You talk to any police chief in the state of North Carolina, these are his two, these are going to be the big talk. Establish a career advancement and step program for current full-time police officers. Try to retain the officers we have. We have a good staff of police officers. We don't need to lose them to other agencies. Like to establish supplemental hiring incentives to attract future police applicants in the event that we do have a vacancy, that we already have those in place. And I'd like to develop and implement a reserve police officer program to supplement uniform patrol. We have one reserve officer candidate, we actually have two reserve officer candidates in running. One has been submitted to training and standards. She will be coming to us from the North Carolina DMV License and Theft, where she was a captain over the Greenville District, and she will be handling our in-service training and will be our training coordinator. We'll get her onboarded, which I hope will happen sometime in the next two weeks. Patrol operations and investigations, increase our DWI and proactive crime enforcement operations. We have a lot of, a lot of individuals driving while impaired, either impaired by alcohol or impaired by other controlled substances, and as a safety issue that I would like to focus on. I would like to update our interview room, which will be in the Police Annex, which is at the back of the Police Department. Equipment improvements, purchase, and assign each officer a properly equipped patrol rifle for active shooter and pre-impulimented response. Right now, the department only has one rifle. It's issued out to one of the individuals, I think it's the SRO. We had a second, but it is not up to law enforcement standards. So we will be pulling that from the line. Replace five ballistic soft-body armors that are set to expire for five of the officers here. And then equip each patrol vehicle with a first aid kit for traumatic injuries, which would include tourniquets and blood stop kits.
Got a question. I got a question. I was talking to a friend of mine that was applied to the Swansboro. He's a former Marine tactical officer. He brought to my attention the roof of the Starbucks in Swansboro, and his comment to me was, somebody can get on that roof and have free shot at two schools and two major department stores. We have a Starbucks over here, and they could literally...
Yeah.
Would it be advisable that maybe when we look at new development in our town, that we look at it from a police as well as a fire perspective?
Yes, and that's, and we can send an officer over. Actually, one of the classes that Officer Sutton took that we did mention off here is he did a, a design, was the community, the community policing through crime scene design course, which would actually come out and help you implement things like, like streetlights, exits, and securing your facility and hardening it against targets for either robberies, armed robberies, or assaults, threats, or just shoplifting. So he's already certified in doing that, so we can get him onboarded on that if you need it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
What do you do with your old handguns once we purchase them?
So we've purchased the new handguns. The old handguns were sold back to that vendor, and they gave us three hundred and ten dollars per handgun to go towards the purchase of our new guns. So we have outfitted all the police officers and selling back the old ammo to them. And I sold some to Pender County. So it's going to cost us about seven hundred dollars to outfit the entire police department.
Also, on your rifles, which is something I've advocated for a long time, are you going to keep those in the truck, or are you going to have holders in the cab?
I'm actually going to meet with a gentleman on Thursday. One of the vendors we're looking at. I've got two major companies picked out. This guy's local out of, well, he's out of Charlotte, Onstock Firearms. They produce a lot of submachine guns for overseas, but they're going to build us test AR. They have actually talked about being able to mount them to the cage right beside the officer, and we're going to try to fix these rifles so that they're compact. They don't take up enough room, and they'll be right beside them in a locked compartment so they can get them and go. Yes, sir. Any other questions? All right. Thank you for letting us provide you the annual report.
Thank you, Chief. Great job.
Mayor Baker, Commissioners, I just want to publicly thank Chief Silva. He's really done a terrific job in the last five or six months here with us, and really pleased to have him onboard and the improvements he's making.
All right, next up is a resolution authorizing the NC Emergency Management Disaster Relief and Mitigation Fund grant application for installation of bulkhead at water access parks.
No worries. Thanks.
Give it back.
Mayor Baker, Commissioners, presented for your consideration tonight is a resolution that would authorize us to submit a grant application to the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management. The total amount that we would request is one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It is a disaster relief and mitigation grant program, and the proposed use of the grant funds is to install new bulkheads at six of our water access parks, and they're indicated on the map on the screen there. We have a total of nine water access parks in the town. We're fortunate, we have bulkheads in place at Manatee Street, at Boggs Sound Drive, and at Ferry Landing Park. This grant proposal, if the board authorizes and if it's approved by the state, would fund new bulkheads at Bonita Street, Dolphin Street, Anita Fort, Holly Lane, Bay Shore Drive, and Easy Street. Each one of those locations is approximately sixty feet wide. There's a sixty-foot street right-of-way there, generally speaking. Because the shoreline varies in those locations, I expect that if we install bulkheads at those locations, they'll probably be anywhere from eighty to a hundred, hundred and ten feet long, give or take, depending on the way the shoreline is in that area. This is an opportunity, I think, to submit a competitive grant application, hopefully secure the funds for these improvements. The board had previously discussed a goal to install bulkheads at each of these locations over the long term in the future. You may recall that we included some funding in last year's budget for Manatee Street. We have some money in this year's budget for Easy Street. And the general intent, I think, was to try to do at least one per year going forward. If the board authorizes and we're successful with this grant application, it would give us an opportunity to expedite all six of them, hopefully sometime next year, and therefore free up those funds in the future for other initiatives that the Board of Commissioners may want to pursue. The grant applications are due on January thirty-first, and we expect that the awards will be made sometime in May of 2024. So if we're awarded the grant funds, I would expect we could move forward with this sometime in the new fiscal year that'll begin on July the first. Yes?
Are there any matching ones that we need to...
Yeah, that's a great thing about this program is there's no matching requirement for this. So that's very helpful.
So... Since we already budgeted Easy Street, I would assume we just wait, take a wait-and-see approach, see if we can get the grant, use the grant instead of the money we...
That would be my recommendation, yeah, since it will be just a few months before we get the grant award. We are actually scheduled to meet with some contractors out there later this week to start to get quotes on that, but I would delay it until after we got the grant award.
Is it budget for the Easy Street bulkhead? Is it in the Parks and Recreation?
Yes, it's included there. And we've, I think we're conservative with the estimate. We've essentially plugged in thirty thousand dollars per location. That would cover the bulkhead installation cost. Generally, we're looking at a four-foot-high vinyl bulkhead with a wood cap. Again, could be anywhere from eighty to a hundred linear feet, give or take. We're also looking at backfilling them. We installed a new set of steps and a nice little kayak slide feature at Manatee Street to make it easy for the kayakers to get down there. So thirty thousand, I hope, is a comfortable number for each of these locations. Some of them probably a little less than that, but I think it's a reasonable estimate.
It's kind of off-topic, Frank, but the Boggs Sound Drive culvert area there where our town right-of-way is, would it be feasible to bulkhead the right-of-way on those two sides of the culvert to prevent washing in from the storm like it happened a couple of years ago with Derek Florence, or...
Yeah.
Just thinking out of the box, I don't know.
Well, I'm not sure if I'm, if I'm referring to the same issue that you're referencing, but I do know that we've got some drainage improvements that Public Works is planning down at the Boggs Sound Drive area to deal with the standing water in that area. Is that the issue that you're talking about?
Yeah. On the right-of-way, I mean, on each side of the road.
Yeah.
On our town right-of-way, if we put a little small bulkhead in there, maybe if we had any money left over.
We can take a look at that, for sure. Yeah. I mean, there's an existing wooden bulkhead there, but we certainly can look at improving that.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing North Carolina Emergency Management Disaster Relief and Mitigation Fund Grant Application. Second. All right. Call it, favor. All right, gentlemen. All right, next up is a resolution establishing a general fund balance policy.
Mayor Baker, Commissioners, we had a discussion at the end of the meeting in December about the fund balance, and I just thought this would be a good opportunity to bring the board a restated fund balance policy, just to clarify expectations, make clear what the town board's position is on the fund balance. So you have a resolution presented for your consideration tonight that I think clarifies the previous board's goals for fund balance, and I would also suggest that it establishes a slightly higher standard for fund balance for disaster response, emergency-type activities. So the resolution that you have before you tonight basically clarifies existing policy. I went back through with the help of the town clerk and looked at previous minutes and previous resolutions, and essentially, the town's current fund balance policy calls for either twenty or twenty-eight percent of our annual budget to be reserved for disaster response activities in fund balance, plus an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When you apply that calculation to our current year's budget, that essentially would stipulate a total amount of eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand and some change that would be specifically reserved for disaster response activities. There was discussion by the board in the past, and I think consensus among the board that a supermajority vote, a vote of four commissioners, would be required to spend those funds for any non-disaster-related emergencies in the future. So that's the current policy. The resolution that you have for your consideration tonight, I hope simplifies it somewhat. It essentially says that the town's overall fund balance goal is a hundred percent of your annual operating budget. And we're currently in excess of a hundred percent of our annual operating budget. Our total unassigned fund balance as of June thirtieth, 2023, is right at about two point two four million dollars. That comes out to about a hundred and six percent of our adopted budget for fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four. That is a very healthy fund balance. I applaud the previous and current elected officials and staff. That's a very good accomplishment for the town of Cape Codaret. So that total unassigned general fund balance is about two point two four million. The policy language that's included in the resolution in your package basically says, our goal is a hundred percent of our annual budget. And so for this current year, our annual budget adopted by the board is right about two point one million dollars. You can see we've met that goal. We've exceeded that goal, a hundred and six percent. What the resolution also says, and in keeping with the board's previous policy, is that at least fifty percent of our annual operating budget would be reserved in fund balance for disaster response, emergency response-type activities. So when you take fifty percent of our current year operating adopted budget, that would stipulate that one million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, almost one million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, would be specifically reserved for disaster response activities. So that's roughly not quite half of your unassigned fund balance. What the resolution says is that if the board takes any action to utilize fund balance in the future for non-disaster-related expenses, requires a supermajority vote. So four out of the five members of the commission would need to vote to utilize the fund balance if it dips below that one million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar number. I think that is a good policy. I think that will make sure that the town has ample funds available to deal with any future hurricane events and potentially other man-made disasters that might occur. Went back and looked at the town's expenses associated with Hurricane Florence. The total debris expenses associated with Hurricane Florence were about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So if you, those of you who were here for Hurricane Florence, if you kind of use that as a benchmark, hopefully it gives you some comfort level that we've reserved... hopefully it gives you some comfort level that we've reserved, I think, a good amount to cover those expenses and not an overly excessive amount. We had some other emergency preparedness and response expenses associated with Florence. But we also received some periodic reimbursements from FEMA while we were spending that 825,000. So I think that's a good number to plan for. What this policy also says is that the remaining fund balance, so that difference between the 1.188 million and the 2.239 million, that's available for the board's use for whatever purposes you deem best. But that is, the use of those funds would only require a simple majority like any other decision of the Board of Commissioners. So for example, if the town wanted to take advantage and buy a piece of land that became available, that was strategic for the town, and if the board wanted to appropriate $300,000 for that land purchase, that would require a simple majority of the Board of Commissioners to do that. If there was some policy decision to say, for example, spend $1.2 million toward the construction of a new police station at some point in the future, that may be something very worthwhile for the town to consider. But that would require a super majority vote because that $1.2 million appropriation would get you down below the 50% minimum that's specified in the policy in your packet. I think the 50% of our operating budget is a good number, a good target for the minimum policy. If you think that's too high or if you think that's too low, we certainly can look at another percentage. For example, 40% comes out to right about the amount that's, would be reserved under the current or the previous policy adopted by the board in the past. So there's flexibility there for the board. Again, bottom line, the reason that you want to maintain a healthy fund balance, number one, you want to meet your cash flow needs. Number two, you want to make sure that you can respond effectively to any emergencies, any disasters. You want to make sure that you're maximizing your interest income. You also want to make sure you've got some money available if a unique, special, strategic opportunity comes along. Again, the good news for the town is we're in good shape. We have a healthy fund balance. I think it does give the board some flexibility going forward. If there's any particularly special projects you want to tackle, you could certainly consider that and not put the town in any financial jeopardy going forward. So that's the, the policy. Certainly welcome any suggestions you have. And like I said, if you want to adjust that in any way, we certainly can discuss that as well.
Frank, I just want to thank you for taking this up and addressing my concerns on it. I appreciate it. I sat here during Florence recovery, so it was very important to me that, that we had enough money on hand to not, not have to go through what we did then. So you addressed my concerns and I appreciate it. I think you did a great job. I'm perfectly happy with the way that you formulated that.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Frank? Does someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Next up is a discussion of the planning board. Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, I'll be very brief. All I'm asking for tonight is consensus from the board. I'm not going to put it as a formal motion, just a consensus. I would like going forward for the town manager to set the agenda for the planning board. I think the town manager knows the items that are more, most important to not only the board commissioner, but from the town. And having the town manager set the planning board agendas, to me, is no different than him setting the agenda for the board commissioners. So I would just like a, a simple consensus from the commissioners here if, if they agree with that. I'm good with that, Frank.
I'm good with that, yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, Frank, that's all I had on that.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjust the planning board and we replace Mr. Alex Quintello with Ms. Laura Nelson.
I'll second.
Is this a current member?
Yes.
And when's the term expire?
May.
May. Before you guys vote on it, I think we probably need a closed session to talk about interne client. Okay.
Can we just move on?
So I, I'd ask for a motion to go into the closed session and we can be briefly before we actually vote on it. If that's.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, let's do it. Okay. We had everybody on. Can we just? So the people may not want to stay here and hang around. Can we just have that at the end, maybe? And then come back?
We, we certainly can, if that's the board's preference.
Hang around here.
Okay.
Okay. Town manager report.
Again, an update on several things that are in progress. I'll just hit a, a couple of highlights. One is I've attached a new format for the monthly budget cash position report. Tried to include some explanation for you of any deviations that may occur. A lot of it has to do with just the timing of revenues received and expenditures incurred. Bottom line is so far for the first six months of this fiscal year, I think things are going pretty much according to plan. No significant red flags. We have our budget planning workshop for next fiscal year coming up. That's on February the 23rd. In your packet, you'll see a draft agenda for that meeting. I've included the items. Of course, we'll go through the, the budget to date at that point and take you through the details associated with that. But then I've included several discussion items that are based on previous feedback that the board has provided, both individually and collectively, some of the key issues for the town, for the board to talk about as we go forward for next year. So when you get a chance over the course of the next week or so, if you have additional items that you think are important for the board to discuss, kind of bigger picture items, please just let me know that and we'll plan accordingly for that meeting on February 23rd. Again, that draft agenda is in the packet. We are in the process right now of soliciting construction bids for the resurfacing of Pine Lake Road. We are hopeful we'll be able to do the entire nearly one-mile length of Pine Lake Road. I hope that will bring a construction contract to you for your February board meeting. I am tentatively working to set up meetings with a couple of county commissioners and the county manager to discuss the school resource officer position. The, a couple of the members are out of town and we're looking at setting that meeting up in February. I'm hoping to have that meeting prior to your February 23rd budget planning workshop. If I could have the mayor and maybe one or two commissioners attend that, that would be great. And like I said, we're still working on the date for that, hoping to make that happen for next fiscal year. We had initially expected the first street sweeping event to happen on January 6th. That got delayed because of the weather. They are tentatively targeting this coming January 13th, so this Saturday night. Hopefully they'll be doing that work. Lots of other items in there. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about anything in the report or really anything else about the town.
Any questions for Frank?
Yeah, Frank, are you? You and Ryan going to try to obtain some estimates on the mini excavator that, that bring to the board next month?
We are, yeah, we're researching that right now and bring some more information back to you.
If you don't have any other questions for Frank, we'll move on to the commissioner reports. Scott, would you, Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, Deanna, I want to thank, thank you and the gym for your gracious donation. Jack was a neighbor of mine, he's great. One of the biggest inspirations to a lot of people. He touched a lot of people in different ways. I hope Frank will start obtaining estimates for that, that exercise area. I would wholeheartedly support. Naming that after Mr. Jack. That's all I have. Thank you.
I'd just like to welcome Officer Sutton. Glad to have you. Happy New Year, everybody.
First and foremost, forgot last, last month, thank the people that elected me and I want to thank my family also. I want to welcome the new police officer. I want to thank Ryan for doing a heck of a job at Public Works. Deanna, thank you for all you do for this community. I mean, I know you do a lot. I was in contact with Maureen Wells. She is one of the directors of the Seaside Arts Council. And she asked me if there are any places in Cape Carteret to post a poster about a fundraiser. And correct me if I'm wrong, Will, for the scholarships.
Correct.
And they give eight and eight or four and four to Croatan in Swansboro.
Well, I think all of them went to Croatan this, this year. And it was right at $10,000.
So I'm asking for places that we can put these signs so that we can make it an event. I think it's going to be held in Rotary Club.
Carolina Holman Garden, call it the Beach Ball for the 25th. You can go online to the Seaside Arts Council and get your tickets there.
We'll be happy to help publicize it if you want to maybe get with me and give me the details at some other time. So it'd be great.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else want to volunteer? January 25th.
January 25th. I think we got 25 tickets left.
Was that it, John? Yes, sir, I'm sorry. It was okay. Just welcome new officer. Thank you to the gym and Happy New Year. That's all I have.
If you notice, Courtney Barnhill's not here to see me. She wasn't feeling well, but she did also want to send her gratitude to Deanna and the gym as well. More accolades about how great you are. And like I say, thank you for tolerating me every day. So that's where I get the pulse. I get all the information about the town, Jim. So you're also a communication center as, as, as well as Jim. So I go there with the attendant to stand for an hour and then saying, you know, I'm there until lunchtime. But thank you so much. As John was alluding to, we do have a fundraiser coming with the Arts Council. Also, we'll be talking about if we want to do the Sounds by the Sound. I'm going to be spearheading that for the Arts Council. So we'll have a talk about that and if we like what we did last year or if we want to expand and do a few more concerts. So I thought it went very well, but we'll be talking more about that in the weeks to come. And so what we can do, and if anybody would like to donate some funds from local businesses to help pay for that, that would also be awesome. On a serious note, though, I would like to encourage every one of you to contact your state officials because they're getting ready to try to raise our insurance rate almost 80% on this side of the bridge, 99% on the other side. That's just unacceptable to me. I know, I know how the game gets played for the utility commission and they ask for more. You know, they know they're going to get less, but this is ridiculous. And if your voice isn't, if you don't say something, then they'll assume you're complicit. So please pick up the phone, make some emails, do what you can, start local with our own representatives and try to make your voice heard. Other than that, we're going to entertain a motion to go into a closed session. Second. All in favor? And thank you all for coming. Happy New Year once again.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we're back in session. So we'll go back to the motion made by, excuse me, Commissioner Ritchie. And would you mind repeating the?
My motion is to replace current member Quintella with Ms. Laura Nelson as planning board.
Okay, and second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? Opposed? All right. I guess the only thing is, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thanks, guys.
All right.